I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all. We all look like Pavlov's dogs going to that corner. We have no presentations of awards proclamations. We'll move on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities. And our phone line is open at eight six zero six six five eight seven three six. Seeing no members of the public coming forward and no one on the phone, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Dr. Braverman, if you would read that.
Certainly. The consent agenda consists of approval of the minutes from the regular meeting November fourteenth, 2018. I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
In a second by Mrs. Guyon. Does anyone have any comments or corrections on the agenda that was presented on the minutes? Seeing none, the consent agenda has been approved. We have no old business. We'll move on to new business. We haven't had any committee meetings, it looks like, since our last meeting. So I'll turn it over to our student rep if you have a report to share.
So I'm going to start off with last Friday. The students and the teachers at Newington High School took part in an assembly to raise awareness on opiate and drug addiction. And the students participated in a homeroom activity in which we learned about how drugs rewire the brain and changed our minds on how we view addicts. So to begin with, students were to write a word that they thought of when they thought of an addict on a note card, and the teacher would read them out loud. And then we went through the presentation about how it's not, they're not doing it to themselves, but they're victims. And it really changed our perspective on how we viewed addicts. So I thought that was very moving. And then after the homeroom activities, the students watched a presentation that included videos on addiction from the point of view of an addict. So they had people talking in the videos of people who'd been through real struggles of addiction. And they showed us graphs and exponential growth in opiate-related deaths and personal stories from parents and other people who have died from addiction. And a lady came forward to speak about her daughter and her daughter's son and how their tragedy really helped her in trying to change people's viewpoints on addiction. And then as a part of NHS's goal to be kind to everybody and give back to our community, this Friday, students and staff are asked to donate one dollar to go towards Connecticut Children's Medical Center for cancer and blood disorders. So when you pay a dollar, the students get to wear pajamas on Friday to school. And during homeroom, we colored in pajama cutouts that are going to be used as the cover for activity booklets for kids at the medical center. And we created inspiring posters with markers and like paper. And we had like quotes on them and we hung them up around school. So there's just like a pop of color on the hallways, which is really nice. And we're also planning to have our winter formal, which is new this year. It's going to be like a winter wonderland theme. So we're planning on having that somewhere near the end of February. And all the proceeds are going to be going to charity, so it's going to be a nonprofit. Les Mis is having its first rehearsal today. It's our musical for this year. So all the students are very excited. It's actually happening in about half an hour. The chorus concert last night was a huge hit. And it was so full this year that we had to open up the back of the auditorium and people were still standing. So it was a really big success. And another exciting event is the promotional video some of our language students have created in order to inspire younger students coming up to the high school to still want to take a language. Finally, winter sports have just started this week and last week. And they're already in full swing. We've had a couple basketball games, track meets. And the sports teams are continuing to bond with their teams. And they're very close this year. So I know personally for soccer, even though our season's over, we're still hanging out together. We're doing a secret Santa soon. So overall, this year has shown how close our community has gotten.
Any questions or comments on our student rep's report? Seeing none, thank you. We are now going to move on to invite some of your peers up to the table. Continuing with our new, our new event at our meetings to have some type of learning for us about what's going on in our schools. We're going to have a presentation on the academies at Newington High School. We're welcoming up from our Medical Sciences Academy, Mrs. Jen Fries with three students, Joshua Kosa, Ingrid Schoenborn, and Maxim Ugrak. Close enough. From the Aerospace and Engineering Academy, Mr. Nate Emerson with Veronica Sado. And from our Culinary and Hospitality Academy, Mr. Scott Pesca with Janaya Jordan and David Townsend. So welcome everyone. And just because it's most of your, if not all of your, first time around the table, these microphones, you have to be speaking directly into them, which can seem a little odd. And you have to press the button at the bottom so it lights up red. And that's how you know it's on. So welcome. And teachers, please feel free to grab other chairs if you want to sit next to them or not.
So when I first signed up for Medical Sciences One, I wasn't sure what to expect. I knew that it would expose me to different medical careers. And I thought it would be good because I wanted to be exposed to various healthcare fields and see what they had to offer. But I didn't know how much knowledge I would gain from this class and how many different career fields I would get the chance to experience. In Medical Science One, students go through eight different modules over the course of one semester. Speech therapy, therapeutic services, pharmacology, biotechnology research and development, dentistry, environmental health and science, mental health and ophthalmology. In each one of these modules, the students start on day one and learn several terms that are associated with their module. Another part of day one allows students to read on adults' personal experiences in that specific career field associated with the module, such as a speech therapist. Students get to see what the professionals' days are like and get to see the experiments requirement, the experience requirements for being qualified to become a professional in that career. In days two through nine, students get to participate in several authentic, hands-on experiences that teach them about their module. Such activities include making dental teeth molds, making sunscreen, or even growing bacteria and viewing it with a microscope. Personally, I've done all of these, all of these activities and they have all opened my eyes as to what to expect from these different medical fields. When I work with my partner, we cooperate to get each task done. And each activity often requires two or more people to work together to accomplish a task. Over the course of each 10-day module, students write two essays reflecting on their activities as well as two tests that test their knowledge and what they have learned from their experiences. Thus far, I have enjoyed my experience in Medical Sciences One. And I definitely have a bigger interest in the medical field now than when I first started. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Ingrid. I am a junior currently taking Medical Sciences Three or Medical Terminology UConn ECE. In this class, each unit is broken down into various body systems. And each takes about a week to complete. Within them, we study the location, functions, and terminology of each, of each organ, as well as diseases, treatments, and each, and various tests performed on each body system. We learn the prefix, suffix, and root words and their individual meanings, such as cerebral angiography, cerebral meaning pertaining to the cerebrum, angio meaning artery, and graffy meaning imaging. So it's a x-ray of arterial blood vessels in the brain. I took this class because I knew I was interested in medicine, but I wasn't 100% sure which field I wanted to focus on. I wanted to learn a little about each body system to expose me to different professions and to help narrow down what I like. I'm taking anatomy and physiology concurrently. However, medical terminology provides a deeper understanding of what each word means within anatomy, which doesn't explain why certain things are named what they are. So we're not only learning the parts of the body and how they function, but also being familiarized with medical terms. And that will likely be necessary in my future in the medical profession. But I got to say, my favorite part is that it makes big words not as scary, such as hyperbilirubinemia, which is a very big word. But it's very simple when you break it down into hyper, which means too high, bilirubin, which means bile, like in the stomach, and emia, which is a condition of the blood. So it's just too much bile in the blood.
Hello, my name is Maxim Ugrak. I am a senior at Newington High. And today I'm going to explain genomics in the class. So I came upon this class through just reading about it. I'm a very intellectual person. I read about gene splicing and editing the human genome, which interests me a lot. It's a lot of capability and potential. And then I knew that there was a medical academy opening about genomics, so I took part in that. So within this class, you do various things. But I feel like the most key and most interesting part for me is taking a sample of someone's saliva and running through multiple phases within an experiment and seeing whether they're going to have a certain predisposition of a trait. Say like whether they're going to be a sprinter athlete or are they going to have higher levels of oxytocin, which is a gene that makes people more happy. And so within an experiment, you would basically get a saliva, go through numerous phases. You would put it into a process in which it would replicate DNA. And then after a day of cycling, of splitting, copying, you would put it into this picture frame. You can see the recessive and dominant traits, which is, to me, is very surprising because you're doing this at a high school level and you'd be reading about it in like newspapers and articles. And to me, this class has really sort of been of huge importance and significance to my life because originally I wanted to go into engineering. I didn't really know where I wanted to go. It was a very general thing for me. I was pretty decent at math. I didn't really know. So it was just kind of a class I was going to take. But then genomics really opened my eyes on the capabilities and the fields in which I can go in the future. I've visited and toured labs at colleges and really understanding how everything in the classroom is applying to colleges and internships. And in the, eventually working up to a level where you're doing lab research.
Can I hold this thing? Like, is that all right? It's kind of fancy.
Only while you're Teacher of the Year. So if you come back next year.
That's fine, that's fine. So I wanted to let the students do the talking about the courses that currently exist. But I just wanted to kind of give you guys hopefully a heads up to what's coming next year. The plan is to add two more courses to our Medical Sciences Academy for next year. So we would be adding our Medical Sciences Two class, which is dealing with biohazardous materials, infection control, epidemiology. And that class also would allow students to become certified in first aid CPR and AED. We also are hoping to offer our Medical Sciences Four class, which is the Clinical Medical Assisting Program. That's going to be a year-long class where students will go through all the skills needed and required to become a clinical medical assistant so that they can actually sit for the Clinical Medical Assisting Certification and actually leave high school with the ability to work in a doctor's office, in a hospital, in a clinical setting if they so choose. So that is hopefully what we have on tap for next year. Are we taking questions now or are we all going to go and then questions?
It's probably easier to split them by academy. So if, if questions for our presenters or Mrs. Fries? Sure. Dr. Braverman?
Did you all know that you wanted to be in the medical field for careers? How, when did you know? How early in your academic life, students?
So for me, I actually just recently wanted to go into the medical field and biology, chemistry. Because this class, to me, was very interesting. Like I said, I was an intellectual person. I love learning new things. And the capabilities of genomics, to me, it really just blew my mind. I loved it. So then very recently, I changed all my majors. I messed around in my college essay, rewriting everything, saying that I was going into biology, the medical field. So I'd have to say it was a very good choice and I like where I'm going in the future.
Well, I've known for quite some time. That's why I enrolled in the Academy of Biomedical Sciences at Kellogg with Jay Fries. So I've been exploring medical sciences and different positions throughout the whole field for quite some time. And this just seemed like a good expansion onto that prior knowledge and a good way to continue my learning and still advancing in my education of medical sciences.
For me, it's a little bit more recent. In seventh and eighth grade, I did aerospace. So you can tell I switched. Around like eighth grade, like early ninth grade. I figured that I liked helping people and I wanted to narrow down like what I specifically want to do for my future. So I chose like medical, medical science. And I felt that this would be a good opportunity to expose myself to those fields.
Mrs. Guyon? When did you choose the medical field?
After listening to all of this, I'm definitely in. Were you able to take the, the Medical Sciences Two course because you were in the Academy of Martin Kellogg? Or is it not a prerequisite?
So I changed the name of it this year. So it's actually now Medical Sciences Three. But yes, it's the same thing that you're talking about. So the medical terminology class students had to either have been in the biomedical academy in middle school or have taken the Medical Sciences One class for the year that it was offered at the high school. So I have three students that took Medical Sciences One when it was offered at the high school. And then everybody else in my class are actually biomedical academy students that range from freshmen all the way through juniors.
So will that change as the years go? Or anyone who does it in middle school will be qualified to?
It's open to anyone. They just have to take, they will have to take Medical Sciences One and Medical Sciences Two first. So that even, even for the students who are coming from the biomedical academy, they don't have to take Medical Sciences One, but they would have to take Medical Sciences Two first.
Gotcha.
Which will be the first aid CPR, AED, infection control class.
This isn't really a question at all, just a comment that I really appreciated hearing from you guys because it's a different, I've heard the basics of what the class, classes are going to be several times. But hearing what your experience is and what you're taking out of it is, just shines a new light on it. And it's, it's nice to hear from, from, in your words. So thank you for being here and for sharing that.
Any other questions for our, for our Medical Sciences students? And of course, if you think of one, we can circle back to them later. But let's, let's continue moving on.
Hello, my name is Veronica Sado. I'm a sophomore and I'm representing the Engineering Academy. And the reason I originally joined because I did the seventh, eighth grade academy back at Wallace. With Josh. And I've always kind of had a liking for things like planes and aerospace and engineering. And originally, I know a lot of people thought it would be like the middle school academy. But I know that for one example, is in middle school, we did like, we designed things on the computer and then later printed them out. And like the software we used back then was like a simple internet program. But right now, we're doing like a much more complicated program. So we're going to make much more complicated things. And I know that when, if I would go to an engineering field someday, which I'm probably looking to, I know they'd probably use more software than we've used before. And I hope the academy continues next year.
Hello. Yeah, so right now in the, we have the one class running. And they're doing, learning about the design and the design process and how to test their designs and how to make models of their designs using CAD software. And the plan is to hope for next year is to introduce the second class, which is Principles of Engineering, which would build on this class. So they'd be able to do more complicated things. They're going to learn a broad range of topics in mechanisms and properties of structures and electrical engineering and some robotics and programming robotics. And that will hopefully build on the processes, the designing techniques that they've learned so far and the skills that they're learning. So that's the plan, the hope. And then build from there. Then there's a third and fourth course planned for the future. But the third and fourth are, need prerequisites to first and second. So that's in the distant future, hopefully.
Veronica, what kinds of things are you designing right now in, in class?
Well, right now we're doing, we're doing like a lot of like practice things just so we can get used to the program since we're only been like, not even like halfway through the year so far. So we like, I know we were building Lego blocks. We'd measure the blocks with dial calipers so we can get very precise measurements. And then they'd be able to put them in the program. So we know that very precise measurements be very accurate. So if someone were to replicate it, they would have a very accurate result. And we know that if you build like a wheel or like parts to like, I don't know, like a small car, they'd have to be accurate, even if it's be something simple. Because we know if it's like a little bit off, the whole thing could fail. So right now it's more practice objects. But we know we could take the same process and put it to later, more complicated things that are useful.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So I heard you use CAD software or you do work on CAD? Which software do you utilize?
Do you know? Yeah. Autodesk and Venter.
Oh, AutoCAD?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for aerospace? Dr. Braverman?
Well, for both groups, I just want to say it's amazing to see you all sitting there in the future of the United States, I'll say. It's, you know, at that end of the table, educationally. And it's amazing for us from the Board of Ed to know that we've been part of it. And I applaud you for all your successes. Thank you, guys. That includes our student rep, too.
So we'll move on to our culinary students.
Good evening, my name is Janaya Jordan. I am currently a student at Newington High School in my senior year. And I am involved in the Culinary and Hospitality Academy Program and currently participating in a culinary internship with Mr. Pesca. Over the past three and a half years, I have taken many different culinary classes. In Foundations of Baking and Pastry Arts, I learned the basics of baking, including the difference between dry and wet measurements, how to achieve perfectly creamed butter, and measurement conversions. Throughout the class, I learned that it takes great patience to bake or cook a delicious treat. You have to also make sure you are following a recipe and measuring the cups properly because baking uses exact measurements. Mrs. Bush and Mr. Pesca always say, it only takes one wrong measurement to throw off a recipe and completely ruin a bake. In Foundations of Culinary Arts, I learned the purposes of different types of knives, the proper way to safely hold and use a knife, and the different cutting styles. For example, julienne's must measure at least two inches. And if cubing or finely chopping vegetables, they must be proper, small size so they're not huge chunks of unpretty vegetables. Junior year, I took Advanced Restaurant Management with Mr. Pesca. In this class, we were split into four groups. And each group would alternate running the kitchen, creating a menu, and serving special hot foods to staff each week. Throughout the class, we encountered many ups and downs, but still managed to overcome them as a group and complete the task at hand. We worked in the kitchen prepping food items and at the front counter managing food sales and the register. We also learned how to provide quality customer service and always try and upsell. As a requirement for this course, you're also required to cater school or district events. With the help of Mr. Pesca, we experienced running an event in preparation for someday running our own catering events. During events, we set up tables, serve food, and clear plates and clean. Currently, I am taking event planning, which will further develop the skills I gained in advanced restaurant management. So far, I've learned about some of the key elements needed to plan different types of events, including interacting with a client and choosing their, and choosing their budget and venue and menu. I have also learned how quality and presentation can make or break an event and how it's little details that matter the most. I look forward to finishing this course with a better understanding of how to plan and run a successful event. In addition to the classes I've taken, I'm currently an intern for Mr. Pesca or take a little bit of everything I've learned in the several classes and use that knowledge to manage the kitchen, promote food sales, and manage cash flow and prep foods for after-school sales and the next day. These things that I have covered in school that encouraged me to pursue a career in the culinary and hospitality field. Recently, I got accepted into the Culinary Institute of America and plan on attending in the fall. I hope to continue pursuing my education and travel the world, experiencing different cultures and cuisines and learning all that I can be to be successful. And this is David.
Good evening, my name is David Townsend. I'm a senior at Newington High. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight as I'm passionate about the benefits of the Culinary Academy. But this is also really good practice for my public speaking class. Anyways, I've been enrolled in the Culinary Academy for a few years now. Two years ago, I took both, entered Culinary Arts as well as entered Baking and Pastry. Last year, I took Advanced Restaurant Management with Janaya. And this year, I'm taking Advanced Baking. Janaya went into what all of these classes dove into. I'd like just to speak about how they affected me. These classes claim to offer experience and understanding of the field. And as both a student and a prep cook at an up-and-coming restaurant, I can truly say that this claim is valid. In these classes, I've learned many things such as knife skills, safe temperatures for cooking, the good kitchen habits, and the importance of presentation. I can say that these four things and many more are not only present in a commercial kitchen, but are essential and required. Despite my young age, I was able to jump into the workforce and perform efficiently and effectively because of what I've learned in these classes. I've proved to my employers that despite my young age, I am capable and qualified to work and further my learning in the field. Now, I also understand the stigma of classes like these. They're an easy class to take to gain credits. And I won't deny that this may be the reason for some to enroll. However, for many students, students such as Janaya and I, this academy and these classes are a place where we found and are able to explore our passion. I'd always known that I enjoyed to cook and bake. But these classes are what equipped me with the knowledge, experience, and satisfaction of cooking, baking that propelled me to get involved outside of the classroom. For those students that truly apply themselves to this academy, they can find their passion and equip themselves for the future. I'll be honest with all of you, school's never really been my thing. I'm an intelligent guy, but core classes never really appealed to me. And therefore, I never really tried my hardest. But with culinary, I'm engaged. I actually apply myself and I'm excited to go to class and help out during my free periods. I hope all of you understand what this class means to me and Janaya. And I thank you all.
Mr. Pesca, would you like to add anything? And we would, just, just because for, more for the cameras than for us, but we need the microphone.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Scott Pesca. And as you can see...
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Scott Pesca. And as you can see, I have two outstanding students that have really helped me out over the last two, three years. When I first came to Newington and started the culinary field, we had a lot of work to do to fix it and improve it to a standard where it is today. And these two individuals were a big part of that. Both of them have come in and helped me before school, at their lunch period, on their free time and after school. I can leave them in charge of an event. I feel very confident them running it. I even have people coming up and saying, what company do you guys work for? Can I have a business card? And that's an honor. That's an honor. And that speaks miles to my two head people that I put in charge of the restaurant and for the events. We with the help of Pam Ennis this year, we did start the internship within the program, within the academy. And it has helped me as well as them that I don't it takes some of the burden off of me. And I can tell them, if I'm doing a lab with the with my class, I can leave them in charge of the restaurant, taking orders, making deliveries. I mean, it's a huge benefit and hands on experience for these young adults to get out and do real life work environment activities. And I tell them, be ready. We have to have a high standard. We are we are in the public view of all of you. I believe I've seen that most of some or most of the events and have had and tried our food. And the professionalism that these two bring is tremendous for the program. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The food is very good. And David, I'll give you some free advice for your public speaking course. If you're giving a speech, you should feel like you're talking too slowly. It should actually feel weird in your head that I really should be talking faster. But if you think you're talking too slow, that's actually the right speed for your class. So, you're welcome in advance.
Thank you.
Mrs. Strohs.
So, I just want to say, thank you, everyone, for coming out. But was it David? You said something that hit home, and it was the stigma. And I have to say, I was very academic. But my favorite classes in high school, clearly, I like to eat, were were my cooking classes. It's when I could actually and you and what was your name? Janaya hit it also. It's when you're applying so much of the stuff you're learning. You talked about math in there. You talked about measuring. You talked about chemistry with foods. And so, don't sell yourself short. It's an awesome program. It makes me happy to hear that you guys are doing so well. And I agree, the food is phenomenal. Your cookies are the best cookies ever. So, you know, my daughter likes to buy them almost on a daily basis. So, I am supplying you with a lot of money there. So, just thank you for all that you do.
I actually take them. I like fold them into a napkin and like sneak off, which like I like, maybe I shouldn't feel ashamed of doing that, but.
You should start carrying a large pocketbook.
It's a good idea. Mrs. Guyen.
I just want to say this to all of you. All of you came in here and you spoke with passion about what you're learning and what you're doing. And there's nothing that I could ask for beyond that, to me, is the best thing ever. When you guys are excited about what you're doing, you're excited about what's offered at the school, that you're excited about being at school, you've found things that you're really interested in. And so, I am thrilled with that. And I'm glad that we've been able to offer that for you. So, thanks for coming in and sharing your stories.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. I want to jump on the bandwagon with what Ms. Guyen said. First off, in my journey in life, I've actually experienced everything that you guys are doing right now. All right, I have architect and engineer training. So, my interest with the CAD software. And as a result of me being an architect and engineer, I learned how to design hospitals, which was in the medical field, which got me to argue with the medical profession. And then paying through for me to pay through school, I was in the culinary side because I worked in restaurants and was a chef, eventually a chef. I started out as a line cook. But what I'm getting at is this, and what Ms. Guyen said, your passion is what makes me feel good. I had the honor this year of actually enjoying food from your services with Ms. Stam and such. And it was unbelievable. I mean, it was just absolutely great. And I really do admire your passion in that. I really am happy that the STEM is starting to show this type of success this early. And I would really welcome the additional curriculums that you and programs that you're offering and wanting to develop. I'd like to see them this year. Obviously, you need students. But I look forward to it. And I wish you so much success in the future. Keep the passion that you have, no matter where you apply it or how the journey in your life goes. Keep that passion that you're having right now. And you'll have a great ride.
Dr. Braverman?
I agree with Mr. Sylvia. The passion that you're showing for aerospace, biomedical, and culinary arts, that's going to bode you well. Stay with it. Keep focusing. Keep refining. And you're all going to be successful. We'll come to your restaurant. We'll ride in your planes. And we'll go to your hospitals for sure.
Mr. Tufel?
I'd like to congratulate you seven. It's proven to us that our STEM program is really working. And it's an honor to sit here and listen to you people speak. Thank you very much for your dedication and wish you the best of luck in the future.
Mr. Branda?
First and foremost, for the gentleman in the back, just so you know, NCTV is going to record this. And they're going to zoom in on every speaker's face. And you're going to get a great shot of all of them. So, you'll be there. There you go. Key words that I heard were jobs, career, and college, higher learning. I think that that really speaks to the program itself, the educators that are working with you each day, but also your passion and your drive for success. And Mr. Sylvia kind of touched on it. But I think for the entire STEM program, I think sky's the limit. And the same for all you students. So, thank you for coming.
Mr. Vasell?
I'd like to again congratulate you folks and kind of echo what everyone has been saying and your enthusiasm. But I'd also like to thank your teachers, your educators. Because if you don't have teachers that are going to motivate you and are going to excite you and are going to make you want to be in that class every day, then it's not going to happen. So, it's happening because of these great people that are working with you. And you do owe them a lot of respect and a lot of effort on their part. Thank you.
Mrs. Stam?
It's really great to listen to all of you. And as a board member, it just makes me proud to be a member of this board and to have students like you presenting and giving us an idea of how things are going. And for me, too, it's I it's just very exciting that this board and the division that boards before us had that were able to create those facilities for you and get them up and running. When I go down to that that wing, those wings, I'm like, this is really cool stuff. And I'm just really glad that as a board and as a town, we were able to provide that opportunity for you. Because many students before you did not have that opportunity. And I'm sure many students before you that are in their late twenties and thirties are still trying to figure out what they're going to do. And it looks like you guys really kind of you got a handle on that early on. So, congratulations.
That's a fun lead into what my my comments were going to be, which is actually that even though you have a really good idea of what you may want to do moving forward, don't let that prevent you from switching to somewhere else. You know, some people go into college, you know, leave high school and know what they want to do. And then they change their mind five or six times. And that's perfectly fine. But what we do know is that everything the three, the six of you talked about tonight, you can translate that into a number of fields. And you can start working in one of those fields for a few years post education and then transfer that into a related field that isn't doing the same things you were doing. You could be an engineer and then go to law school and be a patent attorney. You can be in the medical field and then go into some type of sales as related to that or some type of education through it. You can be in culinary and and you should definitely stay in culinary because we need, we need good, we need good chefs. And good, but you can you can do that into event planning. You can be in a restaurant. You can you can do it in so many different ways. So, the skills that you're actually learning now apply to a number of fields. So, don't be scared in the future that if just because I took a few years of one thing in high school doesn't mean you have to do that for the rest of your life. And it'd be very rare for anyone to do that anyway in this day and age. So, I think it's awesome what you guys are doing right now. Thank you very much for your presentations and how well prepared all of you were, how well you spoke, which is also going to serve you well. And David, if you need a reference for your public speaking course, we can just pull this video and you can do that for the for your presentation. But it's great. And thank you to the teachers for taking your time out to to be here with us. And I know Ms. Guyen had had something else.
Just one fast question. I'm just, did you happen to bring any cookies? Because all the talk of cookies.
Silly me.
It's okay. Our next meeting is on December.
We give you guys those last year patches.
You do?
Yeah, you sure do.
We love them.
It was funny because a couple of you I saw outside and said, hey, where did you guys buy those? I'd like to go there and get some more. And once again, that was an honor. All my my advanced classes made all of those and presented them. And I'm part of that.
That's fantastic. Mrs. Stam?
I just want to piggyback on something. And this is going to be a little emotional. I had a dear friend who actually started out in biochemical. Now, I'm much older than you are. And he was actually in Boston. And he was doing very, very intricate work. And when we would get together after he graduated from college, he could not tell us what he was working on. It was he just couldn't tell us. But years later, we realized he was working on the AIDS virus and that whole thing that came about. And then years later, he ended up becoming a lawyer. And then he specialized in working with AIDS victims. So, it's just just piggybacking on that. And unfortunately, he passed away a couple of years ago. So, it's it's a very sad thing for me. But I just want to share that with you. Seriously, that's a really cool, you know, example that it just feeds into other things.
I think for thank you all so much. We really appreciate it. Now, go home and do the homework for those courses.
You really have to pick out your pajamas for Friday, though.
We are going to move on to a report on staff allocation for 2018, 2019 school year. And we will turn over to Mr. Faresi. How are you this evening, Mr. Faresi?
Very well. Thank you very much for the opportunity to share the staff allocation and class size report. If you could please exchange the report that is in your green folder for the one that is in your white folder. It should read revised and look like this. Yes. So, you can literally take this one and shred it. I appreciate the opportunity to to provide this report. We provided it at this time of the year because it really gives us the foundation of where we are with staffing to date. So, that way, we can take it from where we are and build a budget for next year with our current enrollment and staff allocation as of now, but looking to the future of where we predict it will be and what we will need for staffing moving forward. I do have some details on front that just share some facts around us having to work to achieve filling 24 positions over the summer prior to the start of the school year, 16 of which were certified staff and 14 contracted and two long term subs, as well as other non certified staff positions that we had to fill. But I think the highlight of the details would be on the next page. So, if you could flip, I have some of the data sets. And I'll kind of share a little bit about how these columns work. The first column is the program or school. So, you'll see the very first column shows our career vocational education, and it goes through each program. Each other column shows the various levels and then the total positions. So, I highlighted a few areas. But before we get to the highlights, I would ask you to go down in the first column, just to math interventionists, if everyone could follow me along there. When you get to math intervention and you go across, you'll see at the middle school, that number fluctuates slightly from 2007-18 to 1819, as well as the high school level. That's because at those levels, we allocate teachers to take on classes of intervention students. So, if you could imagine at the high school level, if it's an eight period day, I teach five periods, one of my classes may be allocated to being an interventionist at that time. And that fluctuates from year to year, how many intervention classes we need based on student needs, as well as how many teachers would be filling those roles. So, that's why you see that variation there. But if you go all the way across, you generally do not see very much variance in the total positions. However, there might be based on intervention versus math teacher, just because a math teacher might take on a few more intervention courses or less, depending on the needs that year. Mr. Sylvia?
So, when you say classes, is that the equivalent in the contract of a unit?
I don't believe we have units in the contract. Or if you're speaking of Carnegie units, I would think those are credits.
Well, it's like teachers, if I recall correctly, in the contract, it says that teachers have so many units in a day. And this unit is for pre planning. And this one is for a classroom setting of 45 minutes and this and this and this definitions. And then so many other units. And so, they do X amount of units per day. Now, I now I read it, I go, well, that's a class. And this one's for personal time to prepare or whatever. So, when you say class, I'm trying to tie it back to the the teacher's contract.
Right.
For terminology sake.
And in a term that's, I think, synonymous with what you're saying would be preparations, certain preps. So, their teacher can have a certain number of preps and coursework that they teach throughout the day. It's generally five classes that they would teach, no more than two to three preps or different courses within those five.
Okay, thank you.
So, I'm sorry. Okay. So, then, as you go down, you'll see that in the biomedical academy, we just had our representative here, our teacher of the year, who went up to the high school. And we were able to fulfill that position last year. So, you'll see it goes from zero to one. And as you keep going, yes.
Right, second question. Why is there nothing at the high school for the Aerospace Academy? I thought that's where that man was.
So, that is a preparation right now currently occupied by Nate Emerson, who was just in here this evening. We do have him outlined in the sciences right now, not over there for the one course that he does teach. We could equate that to a point, point two for the one course.
Okay.
You're right, Danielle. In STEM, yes. We have a represent. We're talking right now, I believe, about Aerospace Academy? In the one course that Mr. Emerson teaches?
Oh, okay.
The report also shows as you go down, the two social workers that we just acquired. So, you'll see at the middle level, the highlight from zero to two, which is a great accomplishment of the Board of Education, as well as if you go one more lower, the total positions for the special education went up one. That is due to our ability to have an additional preschool at John Patterson School. So, that's an excellent opportunity that we had as well. Yes.
Sorry, because I know we're going down the line. So, I was reading this very late one night, and I just couldn't sleep. And I just went into a lot of different things. And my head's going to budget and things to look at. And I don't know, I just woke up looking at the elementary school counseling. None.
Correct.
Like developmental guidance is huge. We got to start thinking about that. We should be having some kind of counseling services at the elementary schools for those kids.
Right now, we.
But yes, but it's different. Social what social workers do are very different than what counselors like a counselor would do. I'm just throwing that out there as a challenge to this board because it just, I don't know, that night, it was like, wait a minute, there do there are two different roles. And it's and I think it's a huge difference. So, that's just a side. Thank you.
Absolutely. And one difference or variance that you'll see in this report than reports in the past years, at the very bottom, we did put unfilled and unfunded positions, meaning that through the plans council. the plans council, these positions were put through and were approved. However, these were positions that we were not able to fund or not able to put forward, so they actually do not come out in the staff count. We were never able to fill them. But they are positions that we all felt were very important. The plans council felt was very important. We did want to move forward if funding were available.
That's an interesting point. Thank you for sharing that with us. So how many positions has the Board of Education authorized but not funded?
Right now, below, there are three outstanding that we have said would be highly valuable in our school system and support the educational program, but we are unable to fund.
So to Ms. Stamm's point, did we authorize counselors at the elementary level?
That has not been a proposal that has come forward as of yet.
That's what, that's what I'm trying to get to. So the only-
It's a new thing. I bring it forward.
Okay. So that's, that's what I was trying to get to, is that have the Board authorized positions across the administration, teachers and roles, support roles, and that we're not funding? So you're only saying we've got three authorized positions, but not a sufficient amount of funding for the, what's down in the unfunded, unfilled positions?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity.
I would also add that one of the missing positions in that, because we have Mr. Emerson teaching one course, Introduction to Engineering Design, would also be the aerospace teacher that we tried very desperately to get into the budget last, for this year, and were able to reallocate that one course. So we might want to also add that, Mr. Feresi, at the bottom.
So you have the authorized aerospace teacher?
Yes, we did last year. Actually, it was in the budget, and we had to remove it from the budget.
I think we authorized that through plans in like 16, 17, though, which this is only 17, 18 and 18, 19.
No, these are actually longstanding plans. These positions are actually longstanding plans approvals that were in the budget, and they've, they were carried last year, and they're sort of carried this year as possibles, but not funded.
Mrs. Strohs?
I thought we funded a half-time aerospace academy at the high school.
It was a point-two position.
Oh, that's all, okay.
Yeah.
And that was based on the-
Ability to take him out of one of the course sizes.
Right, but I also thought it was, they did, they, that's what, the amount of kids who, let me rephrase this. Were there any kids who wanted aerospace academy classes at the high school that didn't get them?
Yes. Yes, there were.
Yes.
What we were able to do was look at the science enrollment in the department across all courses, and there were some courses that did not have enough students in it, and we were able to readjust before the end of the year those students into another section, maybe of AP Physics, because that is really Mr. Emerson's background. We, so we were able to reallocate one course that he would have been teaching to, I think that course went over to Mr. Connolly, an AP Physics course, so that Mr. Emerson, that's why he's still in science, because his salary is still coming from the five courses he would have taught in science, one of those now being Introduction to Engineering Design. So there is really no money allocated currently in aerospace academy as STEM. The allocation is still in science, and as a science teacher, he is teaching Introduction to Engineering Design.
But I thought we approved last year, I don't understand how many of this works still, half-time teacher for the aerospace. I thought that was, we approved a full for bio and the half.
It was just, I think it was point-two, when we were in those discussions about, we had a full-time teacher, and we were going to use like point-two, and that was the amount of money that was in our-
Right. The direction was to do the best that we could do to get an aerospace and engineering teacher, and the best we could do was to get that point-two position by using a science educator.
It's possible, we talked about it being point-four, that it would be two sections.
Correct. That was originally the point-four.
So it turned into point-two.
Thank you very much for that explanation, so that, you know, I can get the numbers in my head to line up appropriately and follow through on your presentation.
Okay. So as you continue forward, you're going to see how it breaks down those same numbers that I just showed you at the elementary level on the next page at the top, and the number of elementary educators that we have. Then at the middle school level midway through the page, you're going to see how that language arts interventionist is highlighted yellow, that we did put in for it at one point, we just have not filled it, so it is at zero. And if you carry on onto the next page, you will see how we fare at the high school, separated from the, the large data set on that one pager at the very beginning. And you'll see an instructional coach there. That was something that we had put forward in plans that did not move forward, so that's why that is highlighted where it is. As you move down and you look at system-wide totals, you're going to see in administrators and central office toward the bottom of the page, it went from 10 administrators down to nine. That would be the deputy superintendent position, which was reallocated to account for the two social workers that we have now acquired. So you saw an uptick in social workers at the middle level by two and a reduction here by one. And, and when we go to number six on our agenda, the budget transfers, you'll see that the dollar transfers, that's, that's one of the major transfers when you look at the budget out of one category that would have been a salary into where the, where the social workers are. So that's coming at the end of the agenda, but just everyone remember that. They fit together. If you move on to the next page, you're going to see by level where we are for pupil-staff ratio. So you can take a glance at this chart. This chart shows you from 2017-18 to 1819 right now, where we fare at the elementary level as total classroom teachers up front, up top, down into music ed, the arts, in overall enrollment, and then into the middle level. I like the next two pages a little bit better. They're easier for me to read because it breaks it down more clearly. Most of the questions that I'd want to ask from that first page are, how are we doing at certain grade levels? What does that look like in certain classrooms? And that's what the next page will show you. The next page will show you by elementary school, how we fare at each grade level. And I would just draw to your attention that third grade, Anna Reynolds, those would just be a little bit higher than the average that we see in some of the other schools, as well as kindergarten there as well, similar to Patterson. But they're all fair numbers and an enrollment that all of the teachers are working hard to manage very well. Very proud of how they're doing. Yes?
So Steve, I, I took a quick stab at item number four, system-wide totals, where you have elementary of 83.5 at classroom teachers. I believe that's on your-
Is that on the-
Page.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So I took the 83.5, and then I added professional staff of 47.77 at elementary. And I'm not coming up with a one, the 131.27 or 67. That's on your other page that says pupil-staff ratio chart.
Okay.
So I'm, I'm, I'm struggling to reconcile if that's-
Mr. Sylvia, are you saying that 83.5 and 47.77 doesn't equal 131.2?
Well, I'll get my calculator again.
It does. I'll tell you that.
It does?
It does.
Oh, then I'm wrong.
Okay.
My calculator, pad button. Okay. Oh, okay, I see where it's, thank you.
Okay. Great. Are there any questions on the elementary level enrollment? Can you remind us what last year at this time? It feels like there's fewer problem grade levels that we would, that we would talk about as, well, that seems a little higher than we'd really want. It seems like this is better than it was last year or the year before that. Do you recall?
Ruth Chafee had higher numbers last year, and we were able to reallocate staff to accommodate that, that problem. We had a few transfers toward the end of the year, and we were able by reassignment and reallocation to manage that situation. So where we were able to offset in one area, we still have a little high number in some other areas, but not as significant as I think it was at Chafee. Chafee was definitely a higher and more representative of what we see in Reynolds' third grade, but in two classroom, in two grade levels.
How are our, how's our Reynolds grade-three teachers faring?
They're doing well. They're, they're an outstanding group, and they work very hard, and they're doing very well.
Very diplomatic, Mr. Feresi. Do we have, do we have enough resources that are going into those types of classrooms? Because I know when we see the number of 24, it's not what 24 kids looked like when I was in a class of 24, especially with the EL issues that we've been talking about here, you know, the special, kids who are identified special ed. Do we have enough push-in resources for those teachers?
So that's always the charge for the principal and myself to look at, and we always talk about how do we disperse resources and make it work for the needs of the class? So we always look at two variables. It's not always the number of students, but like you're speaking of, the composition of the classroom. And so sometimes where a number may be large, the composition may be such where it's manageable still, or vice versa. And so we always have to look at that and allocate resources appropriately. To Mrs. Stamm's point earlier, we, we do have scenarios where we, we split social workers, so we have two for all four elementary schools. So we do see sometimes in the social, emotional, and social service area, it is more challenging because we don't have resources more full-time at the elementary level to support. But once again, our staff do an outstanding job of making do with what we have and working very hard to meet all the needs of our students.
Okay. Thank you. And I just point, because those were, those are just the highest numbers, they're at that grade level, but Anna Reynolds in first grade, there could be a class of 18, that's much more challenging than-
Right.
-a class of 24 in third grade, depending on the, on the makeup, so. Okay.
In the first couple of months of school, that's when, you know, principals and teachers are working together to look at our tutorial staff, too, to, to really say, you know, where do we need to have them spend a little bit more time to support that classroom really getting up and running? And so they really work hard to reallocate resources to manage that. As you carry forward, you'll see at the middle level, John Wallace and Martin Kellogg Middle School, and some of our students who, you know, moved up from elementary into the middle level, the numbers looked pretty good. Grade five was high last year at Wallace, and you see some of those numbers, again, transcend into grade six and a little bit in seven. However, it gets dispersed when the academy program comes into play, and so the numbers that you see here also aren't representative of certain students who might not necessarily always be sitting in those language arts or core classes because they may be in the academy program as well. So it's, it's a little bit of back and forth.
Mrs. Guyon?
How do we end up with a class with 25 kids and one with 15?
So again, that's representative of a couple of things. Sometimes students are coming out of there to go into the academies. So where it looks like, especially at the eighth grade, where it looks like it could be much heavier, we disperse that among more classrooms. So you'll see there are actually more classes there opposed, instead of seven, it goes up to nine. Do you see how it does that? So that then spreads out, and it makes it even a thinner pool because kids are spread out more.
I believe these are by homeroom, Mrs. Guyon. So you have two Spanish teachers in grade eight, so they do take a homeroom-
Correct.
-and then that does disperse the students. So you might have fewer students. Homerooms are not always balanced. It just is really who ends up there. So there could have had 20, someone moved in or moved out. But this is based on homeroom for the eight, the eighth, eighth-grade homeroom teachers.
This isn't, this isn't the good metric to tell middle school what they are-
Correct.
-because sometimes we see the metric of each math class, each language arts class, how many kids are in there, and that would look very different than these numbers.
Right. And your math, your math and science classes will have a lower enrollment than your language arts and social studies at grade seven and eight because of the academy. Academy students participate in a grade-level language arts class and a grade-level social studies class, and then leave their grade level when they go into the academy and have math and science in their academy classes.
And then the report goes into the high school, and the high school is equally as challenging sometimes to narrow down how many students will be in a class at any one given time based on class selection, course availability, and some of the other scenarios that actually some of these fine young students were sharing with us earlier. And then if you carry forward, you'll just see staff allocation by building, and it really breaks it down by program and by building a little more specifically. And lastly is the information that you received at convocation or in your welcome-back packet from the superintendent in the summertime, just sharing how staff were reallocated based on transfers, resignations, retirements, and such. That would be a duplicate document, but it does back up the data that was presented in the cover sheet. Mrs. Strohs, did you have something?
I, I just want to say for the record one more time that if there's ever any extra money in the budget, we need to add teachers to the middle school. It's the class sizes are, they're inequitable between the two schools, and they're, middle school is when you, your kids have their emotional, they're adolescents, they're, they're emotional. Their teachers need that time to build the rapport and the relationship with the kids. And although, you know, guidance and social workers are completely important, your teachers are in the line. They're, they're in the line of fire, not, that's probably not the right expression, but like, we pick up when the kids need something, we pick up when something's off. We, we're with them, and if we're expecting them to do that with 25 kids in a class or 24, we're setting the kids up for failure. So I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you.
I've heard you say that before.
That was a first for me, Mrs. Strohs. Ms. Stamm?
Okay, so from the beginning, from my, my journey here on the Board of Education, one of my major concerns is the elimination of those, those career, those career trade professions. And I know with the institution of, or the implementation of the academies, the, the goal was to be able to exchange, be able to have students who may want to go into carpentry or to auto and to other things. And I'm going to tell you, I've been, even till last week, I, people are asking me these questions, what's going on with those kids that we don't have those programs for? And we cannot accommodate that because of our scheduling. So as a board, we need to address that because that was a passion for mine. I stepped back because I was really, I really do embrace the academies, and I love that idea, and I'm really proud of our district for that. But we are missing, we are, is a void for us, and I wanted to share that.
Mr. Sylvia? Did you have something?
But this board did authorize to have technical teachers, did we not? Prior boards? I mean, we did have an automotive shop, did we not?
We did many years ago.
It was phased out.
It was phased out. Enrollment was extremely low.
And so the board removed-
And we could not hire teachers. There were just no, there were no certified teachers for the programs.
So, okay, what I'm trying to get to is, and I'm probably not asking this correctly, prior boards authorized Newington Public School Systems Administration to have that role available, even though you're just, the challenges, you're saying, can't find people that are qualified to do it.
And then other boards did away with them.
And other boards took it away. That, that answers my question. So the question then to what Ms. Stamm is bringing up, do we need to try to have those types of positions available? And then the challenge then becomes, can we find the funding? Or, or whatever, you know, or any available monies available to fund positions at the middle school level, as Ms. Strohs brought up? So if, I just want to make sure that the board has authorized the positions, then the only question that will be remaining for future boards or challenges to them will be, do we have the funding for that particular authorized position?
So I, I think you're in like a, a little bit of a mire. So the fact that the positions are authorized through the plans council and the board has accepted the plans council proposals, in my opinion, means very little in terms of what happens in the future. Board authorizes positions through funding those positions in the budget. If they're not in there, the administration, and, and something happens that we can reallocate positions, like the social workers, this year comes to the board and says, do you want us to hire those that we know is a priority of yours and put them in the system? We say, go for it, and it happens, and then they're- We say, go for it, and it happens, and then they're part of our budget in future years. If it's not part of our budget, it really doesn't matter if it's not, if it was authorized or not. So, you know, we, we work through the year on things that will go into the budget proposals. Once we have a final budget number and, and finish what positions we're going to have and not have, that's really, you know, in, in practical reality, the only thing that matters.
And I understand that it's based on need, it's based on numbers, we have, you know, there's many more children who are interested in the, the chemical academies. But I know there, there are people out in our community that are very concerned about this. I had a long conversation just last week, last Friday night, with a, a group of, even parents that are, of children who have, are not even in school, they're, you know, seniors, and we're like, we're, everyone's concerned about those trades in this town. We're not offering that, we're not, we're not, you know, and I was really pleased that, okay, we had a plan, we were gonna, you know, be, we were gonna be able to resource that out and, and trade, that's not happening, so I feel like we need to have another plan. And I know funding is all, it's all about funding, and I understand that. And I understand why we eliminated, and I really, I, you know, we didn't have the people, we didn't have the right resources, but we need to like, really be conscientious about what the, the fact that we do not have any of those addressed.
Mr. Branda?
What kind of conversations occur with the student body in terms of, what are you interested in that we do not offer? So, for example, I've heard conversations like that as well, where people say, we should offer XYZ. But I heard you say earlier, Ms. Maraca, we don't have the students that want that. So the community might see it as a need, but if the students don't want to take it, then it's not really a need, it's just a perception that, you know, I used to take that when I was in school. So do we do anything like that in terms of talking to the students about what they might be interested that we aren't even thinking of?
When they, excuse me, when they have their planning sessions with their school counselors, they talk about what their choices are and what they're interested in. I don't believe, I think what you're asking, Mr. Branda, is, do we ever survey our students and ask, what kinds of courses would you like to see? I'm not sure we do that, but I certainly can follow up with Ms. Tigno and Mr. Corn and find out, how do we find out what other courses we might want to add within the program of studies already and currently? That I can't answer. And to Mrs. Stam's, just to clarify what she was looking, speaking to, when we first were launching, when we realized we, number one, didn't have a high student enrollment, and remember, we set for the most part an enrollment of 15 per class or per course, and we were getting a half dozen students. We also needed to update facilities, and we also could not acquire staff, was when we saw what's really in the future, and we moved with the biomedical and the aerospace and engineering. When we did that change at the high school, the agreement was that we would work regionally with Weathersfield High School, who at that time was under their school renovation and construction, and with Berlin High School, who was just finishing their new construction and had built an auto shop within their new high school. When the high school principals from those three high schools came together and started that work and that planning, the conversation was great and the idea was super in concept. Then when they got down to the more of the nitty gritty and looking at schedules, because you have to have schedules that complement each other, if not are similar, and it turned out that all three schools had three different high school schedules. So not like when I was in high school, everybody had the same. And that caused the inability for us during a school day to offer those courses. So it meant that there would need to be an agreement for what I believe Dr. Collins used to call the extended day learning periods, nine and 10, that our students would be able to attend Berlin or Weathersfield, and the Weathersfield and Berlin students would come to us for periods nine and 10. Again, that has finances attached to it because all three districts have teacher association unions, and so we have to work around those constraints. It doesn't mean we can't go back to the planning table again and revisit, there are different administrators at each of those schools now, and we can go back and revisit the concept of, is this something that is doable? I'd also share with you that we do know that students who have a high interest in some of those programs attend the state vocational technical schools, as they do attend Glastonbury's Vocational Technical Agriculture School. Those are not costing us funds, we do provide transportation, but again, it's not where it's costing us, and I, I will tell you, we can't replicate what they have in a, in a vocational technical school. So that is where many of our students choose, well, a few of our students who are interested, I think we might have two or three at a technical high school this year. But those are alternatives, and those are conversations that school counselors have with our high school students are entering. Actually, our middle school counselors have those conversations with our seventh and eighth graders because it would be in eighth grade that you would be applying to a VOTEC school.
Could, could we get a count of that? Can we have a count of how many of our students from, from, that are going to those schools? Can we find that?
Absolutely.
Just how many, you know, freshmen, sophomore, juniors, seniors there are? And I just want to clarify for the, the people I've been talking to, these are, these are business owners and career men who have businesses in town, who are looking for resources and looking to hire students from our town to come, you know, and, and so I'm not, it's not about, like, this is what we used to have for me in my conversation, and it never has been, and I just, and I clearly understand, I know we had a plan, I know we had an idea to have, to cover that, but that didn't happen, and I still think that we need, we need to look at that again.
I think, I think I'm too far from the microphone. I think that, you know, it's hard as a board of education to look into the future, and I think 10 years ago when the academies were being implemented, it was in a good faith effort that this was the, the wave of the future. But I think, you know, Ms. Stam makes a very valid point. You know what? Colleges are really expensive, not every, I, I think when you look at kids nowadays and you talk to students, and it would be curious if you had that conversation with them, like, college is a scary thought to have to put forth that money. And, and I think when you look at, and this is just my thought in talking to people with kids in the school systems at that age of starting to talk about college, it's not always the, the expectation like it was 10 years ago. The expectation was, we're going to college. Now, the expectation is, maybe I'm going to do this, or maybe I could do this. And I think you don't have a crystal ball to see that that was going to happen, that the price of college educations were going to skyrocket. But I think we are missing a huge piece when it comes to the trades in, so, looking at it again.
I would, I would say though, that hopefully next year, we start running our class where kids are going to get certified as CMAs, and they don't need to do anything else after that. They, you go in and you have a career, which is one of the, the best parts of that program. And I'm interested to see how the aerospace program moves too, because there's probably some room for those future courses to get someone ready to go and, and work right away after high school. So I, 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 I hear both of your points. This is a much larger conversation than about our staff allocation. You know, these are good, these are good conversations for the curriculum committee, which I'm sure Mrs. Guyan would be happy to set up meetings regarding that, because that's really more of a fundamental shift in how we're thinking, are there other pro, I mean, different programs that we want to offer as a district, which is always a good conversation to have. As you all know, one of my priorities is finishing the programs that we have right now, because they are set up to get people into current jobs after high school that are in high, high demand and seem like they're going to continue to be. So that's where I come from on that, but we should, we should address that through other meetings and not our staff allocation. If we have anything further on, and, and I, please, that's not, we're, we're good. Anything further on staff allocation though, for this year? Mr. Friesen?
Nothing other than I feel honored that I can always spark energetic conversation here at the table.
Your presentations go in the furthest directions.
I'm going to start rewriting them. Develop a new narrative.
Okay. Anything further? Okay. We will move on to, you know, here's going to be, this is going to be another good one.
Oh, yeah.
Discussion action, established dates for review of superintendent's proposed 2019-2020 budget. And I will let all of you know that if you haven't read this yet, you're in for a nice surprise. If you have read it, I will just let you know that Mrs. Maraca proposed this to me, and I responded by saying, interesting. And I didn't know until about an hour before the meeting that this was on the agenda tonight. So that's partly, partially on me that I, I didn't talk to anyone, nor did I say, okay, that I was in favor of it. So I'm gonna, I'm going to give this to Mrs. Maraca, and she can make hurricanes.
So my case is that, as sitting back for 19 years, 18 actually, because this is my 19th, and listening to the superintendent present a crystal ball budget in January when there's a lot still unknown, my decision was to shift that to February, because we always sit at the board table for the last 18 years and say, what's the agent of record going to give us? And we look to Lou and we ask Lou, so what do you think? Are we going to save a million, 2 million, 1.2, 1.4? So by presenting that first meeting in February, it allows us the opportunity to at least have a better understanding of where we are. I'm going to be really funny with you, I'm going to say, like, I don't want to be the superintendent, superintendent who's standing here with a target because I'm coming in with an outrageous budget because I don't know what those benefits are going to cost us. I'd rather be able to pull those out before I present it to you and say, this is about as far as we can go, based on what we know. As for the Saturday, prior to the appointment of Dr. Collins as the superintendent, all budget workshops were on Saturday mornings. It is much easier when you're, when not only are you as adults, but we as the staff presenting the information are fresh, and we're not looking at the clock and yawning, and it just went, I will tell you from my experiences, it went much smoother. And so I am proposing that I would present the budget on February 3rd, which is a Wednesday, and on that Saturday morning, I promise I'll have lots of coffee and refreshments. We would come together and have a budget workshop. It would be a one, four-hour session, not two nights, and you would have ample opportunity to ask questions and hear from individuals. I would then say to you, we'll book, and you know, that's part of my, maybe type A personality, we would plan for each of the following Wednesdays for discussion. We might not need them all. I'm hoping I can give you a reasonable budget. I can't give you zero because we have contract negotiations that we have to be obligated to fund, but I'm going to do my very best to bring the board something reasonable. So my proposal is that we really knock the budget out during the month of February.
The one thing I'm going to add is that I'm, I'm going to be asking very politely that there is additional information in our budget book than what we normally have, because we probably spend three to four hours asking
What's this?
A ton of different questions about what's this, what's that? But all of that information is printed in the much larger budget book that our administration has. So I'm going to work with Mrs. Maraca about what information we're getting in our books that as we go through it, we will likely have less questions because the information will already be there either in, in some kind of narrative or, or just attached, you know, to the back of it. So in terms of it being on a Saturday morning, I think we're going to hear at least one say they get too tired at night anyway, so it makes sense. One say they don't want to give up Saturday with their family. No, was I wrong on that one? All right. Well, we'll go, we'll go down the line. Mrs. Guyan, your comments?
First, I have a question. In the past, we've spent two nights going through the budget, and so four hours, is that enough time to do it?
I'm hoping if, well, first of all, it's always twice as long when we have new board members, and that's because, because you don't...
So that's every single time?
No.
Oh, no.
Because this is, it's every other. So that should make it a little shorter because we've already gone, there's less process to explain, and I'll feel less, I'll feel less obligated to explain all of the minutie, all the minutia because we did that last year, and they should remember because they're smart. The second is that if we're getting more and more information before we go there, which Wednesday to Saturday is not a ton of time to look through, but we may have fewer questions because we'll know what that, what was that, what's that $2,500 drop for from last year that can, that should be able to be explained to us before we are meeting.
Okay. And then my comment says for Saturday, I read it and was like, huh, what? I don't want to give that time up for my family.
Yes. Nailed it.
But I get it, because late at night, sometimes it's really hard to, I know, but...
And maybe we can go bowling afterwards? Spend as much time together as possible, guys.
So, I feel, I don't know how I feel about Saturday. It makes sense, but I still, I like to have a free day, but...
Mrs. Dros?
So it's not that I get tired at night, it's that the next morning, I'm useless. And so I actually was having a conversation and found this very intriguing because Mrs. Kraus had mentioned that to me, that this is how they used to do this. As I said, this is too much, I can't stay up late and then function in the morning. So I do agree, you know, spending time away from my family would make me so sad because I love them so much, but irregardless, I'm, that's not a real word, I found that, regardless, I still am spending that much time away from my family. So, and then the next night, I'm tired and cranky, so I think Saturday's a phenomenal idea.
Mr. Branda?
Is the thought for Saturday ending at 12:30 because we would not have lunch together? Because if we would get lunch together, I would like to propose a nine to one.
You'd really need to do more like nine to 1:30?
Uh, which, well, a working lunch.
To get a half hour lunch.
I'm just looking to X-nay on the 8:30.
We certainly can do that, and I would even be willing to bake brownies.
I'm all in.
I could also make stuff shells for lunch.
It's getting better and better.
We could probably get some pizzas, though. I know, but she does so much. Mrs. Stam, Mrs. Stam?
So the, that's not a new concept, concept for me. And my other thought is the, the block of time, there's no other agenda items to go through before, like, you know, it's a different kind of meeting. But for me, I'm going to be away, so that's hard for me.
Are you away that week in general?
I'm leaving, I think I'm leaving Friday, and I'm going to be in South Dakota until like Wednesday or something. That's my husband, I don't know, he's got to do something, I'm going with him.
So even if we were on a weekday the next week, you would potentially not be here as well?
No, I, I'm thinking I'll be here for the Board of Ed, Ed meeting on the 13th.
Right, but if we were having a workshop, it would, it would have to be probably like the, like, the 11th, 12th? So that we can then have the, the 13th as one of our discussion days?
Right, so that, it's a screwy time for me, that's, it's just a screwy time for me.
Fair enough.
So that's it, sorry.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. I'm all for this. In fact, I'm open for another Saturday in case we have to keep discussing, because basically, I am for 8:30 in the morning, all right? But that's only because I get up at 5:00.
I think your opinion about multiple Saturdays is wrong.
And I appreciate the discourse and the, the other opinion, but, you know, I, I, I've experienced three budget sessions thus far, and I know how contentious I can become based upon these requests. But I, I, I have nothing against this format at all, and, and I'm very open if another Saturday is needed, or additional days besides the Wednesdays.
Dr. Braverman?
Is this the same Saturday that the councils has their retreat? Do we know? Might be handy to...
I have not been notified of the council's retreat.
Okay.
I can talk with the town manager and find out what the planning date is for them.
Okay. Might just save us a weekday if we can meet while they're meeting or do it together.
I don't think it will replace the presentation by the board chair. What we do all the time is that we will invite all of the town council for the presentation on the 6th, and then it's obviously, the budget workshop is a public meeting, so anyone can attend. Several years ago, we did have public who came and attended as well.
I, I, you know, I, I don't love having a Saturday morning, but I also don't love being here until 11 o'clock at night on back-to-back nights, so you do love that. I, I will say, moving into February, I think, and Dr. Collins had kind of started pushing it as far back as he could for that reason, so I think that makes perfect sense, because otherwise everyone's left wondering what the true number really is, which doesn't make a lot of sense to do. So that's fine with me. I'm a little concerned that we'll have Thursday and Friday to look at the budget book, and I don't know if, if everything's ready before your presentation, I don't know if you want to let your thunder go and have the board be able to look at it, because it is a lot of information to review. So that, that's one consideration, or, or, you know, even moving from the 6th to the 3rd or something. I guess that's, I don't, I don't know. I have some concern about that, I don't know if it makes more sense to at least give some of the narrative stuff so we can look through each one, but that's something we can... that's something we can talk about later.
I was going to say, we can talk about that, what you would like in advance. And I think after we talk about the budget transfers tonight, you'll see that I'm pretty detailed about what I provide.
Good. Any further discussion during our discussion time? And then we might as well make the motion and see if it passes. Okay? Someone want to read the motion? Mr. Vassella?
Move the Board of Education officially establish dates to review the superintendent's estimates for the 2019-2020 school budget, to include February 6, 2019, February 9, 2019, February 13, 2019, February 20, 2019, February 27, 2019, as outlined in the memo from the interim superintendent.
And a second by Dr. Braverman. I will mention one thing that Ms. Maraca did let me know prior was that the administrators are, are okay with doing this on a Saturday. So that's in case anyone was wondering about that. They were also on board with that. At least that's what I was told. So if there's anyone who wasn't on board with that, you know, I wasn't told about that.
Mr. Farisi, would you like to validate that the administrators were all in agreement?
We are all all set.
All, all set. Just another, another sacrifice from our administrators this year who really do care about our district. Any further discussion before we vote? Mr. Branda?
I noticed there are no times in the motion. So does that leave the Saturday one open for negotiation?
It does refer to the
I like that 30, I like
Well, I'm going to leave a seven and a five with my wife for the entire day.
Mr. Branda, if you had read the motion fully, you'd see that it references the memo outlined and
So it's based on within the memo. So I have to agree to that time.
You would be agreeing to that time, although, you know, we can, we can always amend the agenda, or just change the starting time when it's posted publicly. Any further discussion? I'm just glad Mr. Branda's not trying to amend the memo right now. No, please.
I'm preparing to vote now.
That's fine. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? I guess she voted aye. So the, the motion
He voted no?
Can we note that Mr. Branda voted no?
Yeah, I voted no.
Mr. Sylvia voted yes.
I'd like to start at 9:00.
So the motion passes seven and a half to one?
Please, that can't be right. No.
Eight to one, aye.
Thank you. I, no, I mean, it's serious. We're, we're doing serious business here, and we're making light of a vote, and I'm not pleased.
Noted. We'll move on to item four, which is an action item for textbooks approval. Someone can read that motion. Mrs. Guyan?
Move the Board of, move the Board of Education approve textbooks Cambridge Latin Course, Fifth Edition, Elevate ebook, and Comprehensive Medical Assisting as Recommended.
And a second by Mr. Sylvia. These were brought to us at our last meeting. We discussed them. They were available for review upon request. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to item five, which is an action item, New Policy Number 4154, Outside Employment. If I can have someone read the motion. Mrs. Guyan?
Move the Board of Education approve New Board Policy 4154, Outside Employment as Recommended.
And a second by Dr. Braverman. This is a policy that we have heard twice now. It was amended, and we discussed it again at our last meeting. Is there any further discussion on the policy? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Four. The motion passes five to four. We'll now move on to item number six. If I can have someone read the motion. Mrs. Guyan?
Move the Board of Education approve the reallocation of funds from one program line item to another as proposed by the interim superintendent of schools.
And a second by Mr. Vassella. Mr. Jacobowitz, would you like to, or Mrs. Maraca? Either or. You tell me.
I'll start, and if I have any places that I can't address questions, I'll defer to Mr. Jacobowitz. So I'm going to guide you through it sort of program by program so that you can find out why there are being changes to each of the programs. So in art, we're looking at $19,730 being reallocated to the art budget, and that is because of the NASA contract that was negotiated with administrators. And remember, we do charge portions of an administrator to each program account, as well as degree changes. So that is why we're asking for that increase in art. We're then asking for a reduction in workforce development, and that is $72,442. As you heard this evening, Jen Freese stayed in the STEM biomedical. Originally, she was going to move that position to workforce development. We did not. As she moved to the high school from the middle level, we kept her in that program. So the position remained in STEM, not in workforce development. So we're removing that salary. When we look at educational technology, you'll see that we're decreasing that by $2,118. That is because our non-instructional administrators are yet to negotiate a contract. They did not take their 1% or 2% increase. That is the reduction in that salary line. In language arts, we're adding $33,553 to that account. That is for three different items. One again is the NASA contract, thinking about the administrators associated, whether it's 0.2% or 50% of an administrator, tutorial services that have increased, and then degree changes across the language arts department. In mathematics, I'm sorry, in world language, we have $47,783, and that was due to a late retirement decision. So again, we're reducing that. In mathematics, we're adding $39,074. Those, again, are, you're going to hear it repeatedly, but that's the NASA contract, degree changes, and tutorial. We are adding $15,311 to music, and that is NASA contract and degree changes. We are removing $22,614 from wellness, and that is a staff member rescinded of retirement and some degree changes, and that would be the retirement increment that teachers are eligible for. In reading, we're adding $17,569. Again, that's NASA contract, tutorial, and degree changes. The $557 is so small, I couldn't account for what that difference was. It may have just been who went into the program had a higher salary than what we anticipated. In STEM, we're removing $19,300. Remember, we had the resignation of Mr. Holmes, the retirement of Mrs. Garrawell. So with that, and we're looking back at workforce development where we took $72,000, that reduction is based on the difference between the salaries of who retired and resigned, who moved in, and then not having, having Mrs. Freese in there. In social studies, we have $23,054 being added. We have a teacher on a child rehiring leave who during that child rehiring leave was being paid because it was her, she's gone for a longer period of time now. But we were paying both the teacher and then paying a long-term sub in the area of social studies. So we were paying additional salaries in the social studies program. In other salaries, we're removing or eliminating $8,027. And as you've often heard at the table, we're struggling for substitutes. We're struggling for tutorials. So that is just some of the money that will be coming out for the lack of substitutes. In special education, we're not changing that. We're feeling that we're in a pretty good place right now with our special education funds. I do have to let you know that we had a resignation earlier this year in special ed, and we just recently, Mr. Farisi notified us of a second resignation of a special ed teacher, and we also had a resignation of a BCBA. So again, we're getting resignations, and we're filling them right now with one of our resignations. We have a, a long-term sub in there until we can hire. So again, we're figuring we're going to be cutting some losses by these changes in staffing. And I know, Mrs. Guyan, you're looking at me. Some of them have been given wonderful opportunities. One of the person that, persons who has resigned is going to have her doctoral program paid by her future employer. That's a hard proposition to turn down. So again, it's just not that they're not happy here, it's just that the opportunities are rising for different positions. In school counseling, there were no changes in home by an adult ed. In school counseling, you're seeing that there's $22,282. That's a NASA contract, and the fact that we moved 50% of both of the clerks at Martin Kellogg and John Wallace from this account to 2410. So those are some of the changes that have happened there. In health and nursing services, there's been a salary change for the nursing supervisor. In the past, we paid her a per diem rate in the summer, which was getting pretty silly because she worked the same number of days all year long. So we just then decided, I made the decision to just add it to her salary. So she knows now that she works and I don't have to have finance prorate her on a separate check. In school psych and social workers, 105, at $5. Obviously, we hired two middle school social workers, so that was the increase that you're going to see in psych's social work services. In speech and hearing, you're seeing the addition of $15,272. Speech and language pathologists are a shortage area, so oftentimes we have to extend or, or give additional money if we have preschoolers that need speech, et cetera. So again, some of those costs have filtered into the staffing salary. No change in curriculum. In library media, we have $17,206. That again is a degree change. We also have a teacher on FMLA who's being paid through her sick time while we're also paying someone to be her substitute. So again, when you're paying two salaries, the teacher on FMLA and the substitute, it causes an increase in your salary account. There's a $9 difference, and I think that was probably just a calculation error.
Oh, okay. Because I was really curious.
We didn't. It was probably a calculation error in the salary, so it was a difference of $9. There are no changes in maintenance. In plant operations, we're decreasing those salaries by $2,444. Again, some of that is a calculation of what we planned for and what actually is happening this year. In transportation, there's an increase of $49,584. We have some new runs that we added this year. We also added two new drivers, and we hired a new director of transportation. So that is the reason for that change. No changes in evaluation, in planning, insurance, employee benefits, non-athletics. And in athletics, there's a $2,432 change, and that's due to the NASA contract negotiations. And in community services, there are no differences. So again, those were the requests for the salary budget allocation transfers.
Questions for Ms. Maraca, Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. First, thank you very much for that explanation. You answered every one of my questions that I was having, and I, I truly appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Vassella?
Just a question. With the transfers that we've done right now, and I had a brief conversation with Mr. Farisi before the start of the meeting, we still haven't negotiated the contract with the last bargaining unit. Now, I'm assuming that when we do that, it'll be retroactive pay? Because they'll be probably, if they didn't take their increases now, they're waiting to, because they were recognized unit at the start in January, in July 1st. So where does that put us here to be able to meet those financial encumbrances that are going to happen?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Jacobowitz.
Sorry about that. In the case where we have uncertainty of that type, it's really a decision that'll be done much closer to budget time, as far as the probability of getting to a settlement before June 30th. Then if there is a retro, it would be addressed through this year's operating budget. I would have to keep our options open between now and budget adoption day to be able to determine if that negotiation settlement spills over into next fiscal year, where we have a retroactive prior year to deal with. We've had that occasionally happen with AVSME in the past, where we, you know, look at that as one of our last decisions, you know, at budget time to determine what, you know, we need to carry forward based on how negotiations are going. Whereas right now, it's just premature to, you know, really build it in. You know, we have general estimates for where we will go next year, but that will be superseded as we get closer to the end of the budget cycle.
Mr. Jacobowitz, is it, is it accurate that in last year's budget, there was a percentage increase for those positions? That's just being held right now?
Yes, at this point. That's correct for this year.
Okay. And so if it spilled into next year with retro pay and it impacted next year's budget, we could, you know, preserve that money that was pigeonholed for what we expected the increase to be, to go into the non-lapsing fund to then
We'd probably put that together.
It'd be some kind of mechanism like that where it wouldn't need to impact next year's budget?
Right. We would have to work that out with the town as far as support of that particular approach. We've not had to do that in the past.
Under, understood. But there's some way we could do things so it didn't actually impact next year's budget number, since we have the money, we have, hopefully, all of the money in this year's budget already budgeted because we expected some kind of increase.
Correct.
It's just a matter of how it gets paid and when.
Right.
Okay. Very good. Did you have, okay. Any other discussion, Mr. Tufel?
On the STEM program, the $19,300, that's a salary adjustment. Did that include benefits? Or strictly salary?
Strictly salary. That's a reduction of the $19,000 in STEM. We're reducing it because that is not where we were able to look at the cost savings of the retirement of Mrs. Garrawell, and the salary of Mr. Holmes and the staff that are replacing them are not as costly or as expensive. Their salary is not as high.
Mr. Sylvia?
Thank you. So now, I go back to your report for STEM. It said we have nobody in those positions. So
That's not what the report said.
We have no one at the high school, I believe is what it was, Mr. Sylvia.
Oh, okay. Okay, right. At the high school. Thank you. All right.
Any other discussion on the budget transfers? Okay, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to Superintendent of Schools' report.
Thank you. A couple of highlights and a couple of additions. First of all, in the superintendent's report, you're going to see under transportation that there were a total of 107 trips provided by Newington's Transportation Department. That is amazing because we do it pretty much at no cost. If students take a trip within Newington, their cost, if not to cover the admission, is a dollar. If they're in the Hartford area, it's $3. And if it's outside or going from here to the Maritime Museum in Norwalk, it might be $5. So it's very reasonable. In talking with Mr. Barnes, those trips, if we had to contract with a vendor, could cost the school anywhere from $5 to $1,000. And that would be costs we would have to put off on our students. So I just have the greatest appreciation for our ability to be able to provide our students with transportation between field trips and athletic events. And that's wonderful. I also would like to let you know that we are working on designing the Garfield Street property for buses. We've been working on that. Lou's been working on that to get a power out there so we have electrical for our buses. So that very soon, we should start being able to make those changes that we agreed to with the town, and that's going very well. Audrey was able to tell you about the opioid program. It was totally amazing and wonderful for our students. The high school and middle school principals this week, along with Mrs. Freeman and myself, met with Chief Clark and the Rotarian President, David Tedeschi, to talk about their program on stopping human trafficking, particularly in consideration of the Berlin Turnpike. And so we're working with them to see what about the curriculum that they've been looking at could be added to the state mandated sexual assault curriculum at the secondary level. So that's pretty
So that's pretty exciting. I also want to draw your attention to two items that are in your white folder. The first one is going to be the blue and white stripe. Last year, we provided you with the to-do list. So this year, I revised it. It's always going to be the newest item at the top. Instead of last year, you had to flip through the pages and get to the bottom to the most recent, so we're numbering them backwards. So if you asked for something, you may look at this and see the status of it. Also, you'll notice for fleet information, it's blue. It's because when I send this to you electronically or share it with you electronically, those will be the links that you can click on, as you did last year. We began this during budget season. We actually started it with our first September Board of Ed meeting. And my last item is the actual, let's see, Mr. Schulman, you asked for the transportation refresh. And so this is a list of the vehicle fleet and age report that Mr. Barnes put together, showing you the ages of our buses and how many we have totally. What I'd like to highlight for you is that Mr. Barnes, Mr. Jackamowicz, and I have been working on revisiting our bus replacement plan, and Mr. Barnes has developed an 11-year replacement bus plan, as well as revisiting some of the specifications for buses. And the revisions are going to maintain all of the current safety features that we have for drivers and students. But with his new plan, we're going to reduce the cost from the replacement plan at $644,000 to $478,000, because we're working on an 11-year plan instead of that 10-year plan. So that's pretty good news, I think, in terms of looking at cost savings by looking at an alternate plan and looking at some different specifications for our buses.
Can, do you know why there's a 2020, two 2020 buses? Does that mean that there are buses that are going to be ordered some this time this year that we would expect to get in 2020? Or the 20...
I think those are the models of the bus.
Do they do the car thing that if you get it in 2019, it's actually 2020?
Yeah, 2020, correct.
Bus. Okay, that makes perfect sense.
I know, I don't like it with auto dealers, and I'm not sure why.
I don't care about that. I get that completely, because I have a car buying issue. I completely get that. What does this mean? So 2006, zero buses?
We have no buses.
No full-size buses.
That are 14-years-old.
Correct.
So...
We do have one athletic bus. When you go all the way over to the right, we have one 14-year-old athletic bus.
So this year is the year of the buses, not the year that they purchased?
Correct. That was my...
And for, we purchase all of our full-size buses new, is that, that's correct?
Yes.
So if it's a 2007 bus, we purchased it in 2006? Is that, that would be correct?
Typically be the fall of 2006 when it arrives.
Okay. So this will also tell us, at least certainly for the full-size and the mini-buses, I have to imagine, that tells us when we purchased those buses. So if we go back, so, you know, 2006, fall of 2016 was when we had the huge, 13 buses came in between fall and mini.
Correct. Over the years, for the 25 years I've been here, we have only purchased one large bus aftermarket, and that was for athletics. It wasn't for general use.
Okay. So this is, this is really spot-on for when we purchased those buses as well. Mr. Sylvia?
I'm very excited about the reduction from the 644 to the 478. Am I too presumes that the 478 will be the request going to the CIP committee for the buses on an annualized basis?
So would we be revising that? You know, we'd have to revise what's in there.
Yes.
Okay. And how did we arrive at an 11-year calculation? I know that there's been a lot of debates going on between 10 and 15 years, depending upon which part of the country you live in and such. So I was just curious how we arrived at 11.
Actually, Mr. Barnes presented it in different, he had 10, 11, I want to say 12 and 13 years. And when we looked at what repairs might be necessary, and again, Dean is very good at what he does, and he has a long history of bus transportation and knowing about safety and precautions, and looking at his plans and what looked, the estimates for repairs, he even actually said to me, flat-nose buses, and I don't know anything about flat-nose buses, but he said, "Flat-nose buses cost much more to repair, and the engine is much harder to get into." So he knows all of the details. So looking at his projections, we felt most comfortable knowing that we would not be spending more money than necessary if we went with a 12, 13, or 14-year plan.
Thank you.
And I have to assume that just based on our purchasing history, that it's not necessarily a flat, we're not going to be able to do three of one size, one of the other, and always be perfect like that, because we have kind of like a title, what is it? Sinus? Sign?
Sin.
Cosine? What's the other one? Just because of the pattern of our past purchasing, there will be blips where we need more or potentially need, you know, and it can level out. If we actually got funded at that level, it would probably level out over a decade or so.
But isn't that why we have a non-lapsing fund?
It can be one of the reasons.
So I mean, if we're fortunate, we have a year that we only need, we're requesting 478, in that particular year, we need to spend...
Well, so that would be, that would be CIP money, but that money does stay in those accounts. So if we didn't need a fourth bus, we could hang on to that money in that CIP account.
In that CIP account, correct.
Until it comes up, except for the fact that, and if you haven't been to CIP meetings, this gets brought up all the time, how much money is in there and how much do you need next year? Because it's much harder to argue for a sum of money if you already have part, 50% of that money sitting in the account that you haven't used. And not to say that it's not money that doesn't need to be used, but if you're planning for a longer-term purpose of flattening out the buses, that it's a much more nuanced argument than, well, we don't want to be over 2% this year, so we need to cut CIP by half a million dollars. So you have 150 in your buses, don't you? Only need 300 this year instead of 450? But that could impact our plan for two years later.
Yes.
So it's a, it's a trickier situation than that, because it's not a non-lapsing fund money. It's, and the non-lapsing fund money, I'm sure at some point will get turned into the same argument, because town council is always looking for reasons why to fund fewer dollars, so they can bring in less, you know, less tax burden on the town and say, "Well, you have money in your non-lapsing fund that's not earmarked for anything in particular, so why don't you, we're going to decrease your actual budget for next year by X dollars," which, you know, it's just the evolving argument from health benefits money that comes in. So I, I see what you mean. There are potentially negatives to that, but, you know, obviously, we're all working together, so...
Thank you.
Is there any discussion on the Superintendent of Schools' report? Seeing none, we will, thank you, Mrs. Maraca. Appreciate the detail. We will move on to public participation on any matter related to board responsibilities, and our phones are open at 860-665-8736. Seeing no public and no one calling in, we'll move on to remarks by board members. Go for it.
I knew I wrote it down, I couldn't find it. When we pay, when the kids pay for buses, like they pay a dollar, does that go back into the operating budget, or does that go into that other?
Those dollars actually go into the Student Activity Account?
Dr. Braverman? Comments?
November 14th was the Cape Conference. Mrs. Maraca invited myself, and actually, hi, we all went. It was a fabulous day. I will say that it's worth attending. The presentations were top-notch by area. Mrs. Maraca knew every single person in the whole place. It was a pleasure to walk in the halls with their very well-respected. It was an honor to be with you, really. But the presentations, the keynote speaker was terrific, and all the presentations by our area's school partners were really good. So it's for you getting some new ideas. Lunch was interesting with other towns, so it's worth attending for next year for anybody that can go. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vassallo? Miss Stam? Mr. Tufel? Mr. Branda?
So the last time I wore this shirt at a meeting was about seven months ago, when Audrey Carpino was diagnosed with brain cancer, a student at John Patterson in my daughter's class. She passed away, as I think everybody knows. She passed away on December 6th. Audrey loved to read. She was my daughter's math buddy in class. And I bring it up here because Mrs. Stam kind of talked about the need in elementary schools, and I know probably many of us have had conversations about social workers and school psychologists and whatnot, and what the John Patterson community is dealing with right now is something that nobody ever expected to deal with. As my youngest daughter said when we told Nora about her friend, she said, "Wait, kids can die." And a lot of kids are dealing with that right now. And it's a really heavy time at John Patterson right now, and there's, there's a lot of people helping, Ms. Burba, Ms. Murphy, Mr. Gatos, my daughter's teacher, who Audrey was in their class, who went to go see Audrey in her final days, reading to her, and sending us daily updates about how our kids are doing, dealing with this, the questions that they're asking, so that when they come home, we are prepared to have conversations with them. Getting phone calls at night to just check on how our kids are doing. You know, Mrs. Breen, Mrs. Jensen, everybody there, it's, it's not business as usual, obviously. You would never expect it to be, but everybody in that building is doing the best they can, putting on a face that I know deep down, they want to break down themselves, but they are pulling through every day for those kids. And it's a really heavy time, and on Sunday is the memorial for Audrey, and it's going to add another layer that everybody in that building is going to have to deal with. And I just, you know, who you pray to, what you pray to, your thoughts, just keep it with not only that family, of course, but just everybody that works in that building as well, that they can just have the strength to get through each day, as impossible as it feels. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Branda. Mr. Sylvia, do you have any remarks?
No, thank you.
Ms. Strohs?
I kind of feel bad following that, but I did want to give a shout-out. Sorry, it's like terrible to say this, but the chorus teacher at the high school, phenomenal. Mr. Clark, phenomenal, just absolutely phenomenal. So I wanted to give a shout-out to him. And also, I wanted to throw out, it's great to hear from the high school reps. It would be awesome to hear about the other schools. Like, we don't hear, there's so many other schools in here, like, knowing about what's going on at Patterson is great to hear. You know, I can share what's going on at Wallace, but it would be great to hear what's going on at the other schools in some form, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
I will contact Mrs. Morello at the high school. In the past, I know the elementary and middle schools have submitted information to the student reps, and they have been able to share it, so I will contact her and let her know that if it's possible to reach out to those schools.
Mrs. Guyan?
There are a lot of great things happening in our schools right now. This morning, I got to spend time at the high school with Ms. Miller's students. They did a Shark Tank-type presentation, and it was just in, we get to see them showing off what they've learned through the years in so many different ways. It was just another example of that, and our students are very poised and well-spoken, and they did a really nice job, and it was a really fun experience for me to be able to be a part of that with them. So just another example of things that are going on in our school. And Mr. Branda, thank you so much for sharing all of that with us. It is, again, just a testament to our staff, how much they care about our students and what they've done for everybody, and it's, it's heartwarming to hear how much they care, and I am deeply sorry for everyone at that school, because that is a tremendous loss and will weigh heavy on our hearts for a long time.
Thank you. Just a reminder to the board, next week, we are meeting with NESDEC to start, you know, really start digging into the process of our superintendent's search. We also, I think on Thursday is when we're having the Executive Finance Committee meeting with Mrs. Maraca to, you know, start beginning, talking about what our budget's going to look like. And so that's what's coming up, and then we, then we have a short break for the holidays. We have, we do have a, the Hearings Committee has a meeting after the Executive Finance Committee meeting, so that will also be on Thursday. And with that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn by Dr. Braverman, second by Mrs. Guyan. All in favor? Aye. We are adjourned at 9:03 PM. Thank you.